All the board meeting to order, seven o'clock. Tonight's attendance, we have members present, Mr. Mann, myself, Ms. Curtin, Ms. Taylor, Ms. Dunn, Ms. Kermersky, and Ms. Moose will not be here, and Ms. Massey, we hope to have join us soon, if she's not coming on yet. With that, I'd like you to please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Normally on our agenda, we have the Student Council, but that's a TBD till school starts. And then, at this point, we will move to our public forum, which is gonna be also part of our reopening community forum, and part of our discussions, where we're committing in public feedback. We had another committee forum last night, Mr. Simons, and he'll fill us in on that. So, as we have been doing remotely, if members of the public would like to comment, please use the email that is up on the website to let the board know your comments. I will now read the public comment information. Residents, students, employees, and business representatives of the East Greenwood Central School District may address the board on matters concerning programs under operations of the district, other than matters involving personnel. Members of the board do not directly respond to citizen concerns during the public forum. If a response is appropriate, either the president or superintendent will contact you until near future. Those persons wishing to address the board will be recognized by the chair of the meeting, and should state for the record their name and address or affiliation with the district or business. While the board does not wish to infringe upon free speech protections, it must be stressed that the visitors' forum is not deemed to be an open forum. The board present will conduct the forum for the orderly and efficient operation of board business. In addition, any remarks which may be considered defamatory or stigmatizing are prohibited, so we declare it out of order. So with that, we will monitor our public email forum, and then, maybe, Mr. Simons, you can comment briefly on last night's.
Sure. Mrs. Wager has agreed again to facilitate the review of the public comment, so we appreciate Mrs. Wager doing that.
Well, thank you, Linda.
The, the district has now held three forums, this will be the fourth forum, to address questions and concerns that may exist among our parents and our community regarding the school reopening plan. During last evening's forum, we did engage members of our administrative team, and several members of the public in a discussion which we broke down by elementary, middle school, and high school, so that we could delineate more of our responses specifically to those particular levels. The, the district is continuing to encourage everyone within the community to read the plan, and the subsequent plans that were posted on the website. There is the preliminary reopening plan, which I'm going to ask the board to approve this evening. There are also specific elements of the plan that were required by the state to separate out and make sure that the public had an opportunity to review. Those specific plans included the full remote learning plan, as well as the district's plan to work with the school and Rensselaer County to ensure that we had a plan for testing any students suspected of having COVID-19, and any contact tracing that would need to be done. So, all of those plans are on our website, along with a frequently asked questions document, which has been updated after every public session. We have not updated it as of last evening, we are still working on that right now. So many of the questions that people may have or ask last night, it was a general sense that some of the people that were in the forum last night had not been at previous forums, because some of the questions were, were posted, were answered on the FAQ. So, we're encouraging people to look at that FAQ document. In addition to tonight's fourth community forum, we will be having faculty and staff meetings starting tomorrow. And those faculty and staff meetings will include the high school with a separate meeting, the elementaries coming together for a combined meeting, and the middle school. I think the, there is also one of the meetings on Friday. So over the next two days, there will be a meeting at each level with our faculty and staff. We are working to schedule separate meetings for our transportation department, our food service department, together with our maintenance department. I think we're looking for next Tuesday or Wednesday to have those meetings and discussions. And, we've established a dedicated email, which the governor wanted a dedicated email, and we do have a dedicated email. Not the email that people are sending tonight, but one that's permanently set up for specific reopening questions. People can always email me, there have been a number of people who have been emailing me. I only got a few of them after last night's meeting, that were generally positive, or specific to some thoughts on the child care issue. So, we're doing everything we can to make sure that the community is informed. Sometimes we get a question that causes us to go back and refine our plans, and we've had that happen, and that's a good thing. If there are unique situations regarding individual children, or specific questions that relate to an individual concern regarding a child, those questions are best addressed by contacting your child's respective building principal, who have been very responsive to the emails.
Great.
Right? So without further ado, we'll open it up for public comment.
Great. Linda, do we have any public comments at this time?
We have two, two questions so far. The first is from a parent of a seventh grader. Would like to know why was the decision made to have students change classes versus the teachers changing rooms?
At both the middle school and the high school level, we are having students change classes, because it was really the only way to offer all of the courses that we currently offer. The guidance indicates where feasible, we should try to limit mixing of groups of students. We made a determination that the full complement of middle school courses and high school courses, including electives and AP courses, should be offered, because we were, we were doing a hybrid from the beginning. The desks will be cleaned in between classes. As I said last evening, there are discussions that we have to have as a school district with our employee groups about how that would be done. For example, the CSEA union represents our custodian and maintenance employees, the teachers represent our teachers, counselors, and social workers. SRP, school-related personnel, represents aides, and clerical employees, and computer technicians, and other groups of employees. So, given some of the shifts that we're making in what we normally would do, and given the cleaning requirements, each of those respective bargaining units could be, employees could be impacted by whatever procedures we develop. And so, we are making sure that those procedures are understood by everybody, who's gonna do it, when they're gonna do it, and how it's gonna be done. So, we're still having those discussions, but we will be cleaning the desks in between groups. We have products that kill COVID-19. We've identified two products, one that we use all the time, and a different product that may kill it quicker. And we're, we've ordered the supplies and materials to make it happen. But we have to sort out the issues regarding our bargaining units before we can finalize the procedures.
I think too, the emphasis, we want to offer as many educational opportunities for our students, in terms of classes and things like that. So, having the students move, that mix is also.
Right. We are limiting the ways that they can move, as Mrs. Barker did a very good job last night of explaining what they're doing at the middle school. They're staggering the dismissal of the students. So, even though the class on in-person days would be reduced by about 50%, in some classes, it'll be less than that because of the way the scheduling works. It won't work out even, you know, because kids take different classes. But, half the class would be dismissed first, have an opportunity to transition to their next classroom, and then, it would be staged, and then the next group would come out. So that will enable the social distancing to occur as the kids are leaving the classroom. There are directional arrows that have been put in certain corridors of the schools, stairwells that have been identified as, these are only the upstairs wells, and these are the downstairs wells. So people are walking, kids are transitioning differently than they normally would. It's also important to remember that our schools will not be having crowded hallways, because, you know, everyone has seen that image of the school in Georgia. We're gonna have half the kids in the building on those days, and so, that will not be the image of how we're going about things.
And then, a parent has a concern that if high school students will only have two days of direct instruction per week, this parent is concerned that students will not be ready for Regents exams.
Well, they're really having three days of direct instruction, because they're gonna have their A and B days, two days a week, and then they're gonna have virtual live instruction on Wednesday, in which students will follow a period-by-period schedule and receive all of their courses. Additionally, the curriculum pacing that the teachers will do will be completely aligned with preparing kids for the Regents exams, and the assignments and projects that they give on remote days will be supported by the in-person instruction that they give, and also aligned with Regents preparation. So different from last year, where the Regents were suspended, the Regents exams are still in place, and the model of curriculum delivery is being put together in such a fashion that the in-person instruction supports the assignments, the virtual live instruction, it all works together, and at the high school level, the teachers will still follow curriculum that is aligned with the Regents. Mr. McHugh, anything to add on that?
You've covered it very thoroughly. It's the lesson design, so it's still standards-based instruction, it's the same curriculum, it's just the delivery of that instruction is changed. So it's really maximizing that in-person time, and making sure that when students are remote, that they're engaged in productive, standards-aligned work at home, that's the application part, of where you're delivering the content, and you're modeling, and you're supporting with guided practice, and then that independent remote time, students are actually applying that skill.
There's one more that just came in. Is there any chance that kindergartners will be able to go more than just two days a week? I don't know how the kids will learn only being in classrooms two days a week.
There is no chance of that currently, as we open up in September. As we move into the year, and we monitor what is happening within the region, there is a chance that we could increase in-person learning. I think the state will have to play a role in enabling districts to do that. The guidance may need to be looked at, at the state level. We also anticipate that there could be some shifting of students who may feel that remote, families may feel that remote is a better option, so those two things working together could potentially indicate that we could accommodate more children. In the event that we could, we certainly would prioritize what grade levels that occurred in, and I would have a strong view that our kindergartners and our first graders should be first consideration.
Yeah, that's a good idea. Do we have a sense of the numbers for remote versus in-person?
Yes. As of about 5:30 this afternoon, when I checked in with Mark Adam, I will.
The deadline is Friday?
The deadline is Friday. I believe it is about 23% for the full remote option, and 77% for the hybrid at this time, and approximately 2,300 responses to the form, the enrollment form. So we still have a number of families who haven't responded, and Mr. McHugh made a good observation before we started this meeting. If we get all the responses in, it's likely that that percentage of remote may come down, because people haven't, people haven't responded yet.
Yeah. So. So the assumption is if you don't respond, your conclusion is they're gonna do in-person?
Right. The assumption, the assumption is if you don't respond, we'll schedule in for your AB, AB class.
Yep. Sounds good. Any else come in, Linda?
One more.
One more came in, okay. We have time.
Besides prioritizing for families, how will the groupings be done specifically at the high school level? There are rumors that it will be done either alphabetical or based on where you live.
Neither one of those are completely, the one about where you live is completely not At the high school, it is a difficult task. We had a meeting with our administrators yesterday to check in and see how that process is going. It's based on course requests and enrollment numbers that need to be maintained within each of those courses to practice the social distancing. So it doesn't line up in a way that you could do it strictly by alphabetical order. It also, in addition to the courses, the, the needs of the students, so if a student is receiving a special education support class of some kind, that has to go into factoring that in. It's not a sequential process, the principals have to keep going back and forth and saying, okay, well, I've got this child, the courses that they need, but yeah, I, I need to figure out how to get another course for this other child, so I'm gonna go, it's kind of a back-and-forth type of a process, so there's no linear way to do it. There are about probably 10 different filters that they have to run it through to figure out the right mix, and come out with about even in the classes. It's a, it's a, it's a tough thing to do, I'll defer to Mr. Harkin if he wants to add anything, but it's really at the high, high school and the middle school level, it's the classes they need, it's the courses that require, and trying to make sure that the classes are fairly balanced with the staff that we have that certified in those areas.
Just grab microphone, Mike.
Oh, microphone?
Yeah.
Yes, Mr. Simons, you're correct. We have to look at the filter of the Singleton classes that we offer, like you mentioned the special ed, but also our higher-level classes, laboratory, you may, you know, split a class, but then you have the 15 kids one day, and then 38 kids the other day for our different labs, and PE classes. So there is, there's about 10 different variables that go into it, and then towards the end of it, we look at the transportation, we're gonna have too many kids on the bus, so there's a lot of factors that go into play when we try to do that. And like you said, right, at this point now, we're going back and forth and moving kids, and just because you move one kid out of a science class to get the numbers down, and then maybe the math class goes back up above the 15, so.
Oh, boy.
It's just kind of like a game of checkers that we're playing right now, going back and forth.
Thank you, Mr. Harkin.
And that process will probably continue until?
Probably till next Friday.
Next Friday.
The, we're hoping to release those schedules in draft form, so parents can take a look at them, if there seems, something's missing, they can let us know, but April 28th.
And again, we want to reiterate that the number of electives and courses that we offer at the high school, we want, again, to continue to offer a extensive amount of opportunities for our students, and that means when we have to do those kinds of shifts, keep those class numbers down, but also fill the class appropriately.
Right.
It makes shifts, so it's like, is it like a whack-a-mole kind of situation?
That's a good, that's a good metaphor, Mr. Goodwin.
Until we can get those accurately, not to say that schedules are like whack-a-moles, but it's a complicated process, and I think that, and then there's also, the schedules come out, and then, you know, there's, that, there's things happen there, right? So, we'll do our best.
The elementary process is a lot easier, to be honest with you, it's a straight grade level.
So once those schedules are kind of put together, then, generally speaking, after that, we'll seek out how things fall. So, again, it may not be a pure alpha, or, you know, we have the other considerations we have to put in place first. Good question. I know I get it from my daughter all the time.
Mine too. And anything else?
There is a question, and I think you are.
Linda, before you, before you, and as part of the public comment, people are supposed to identify themselves and where they live? Are they doing that?
They are identifying themselves.
Okay, could you do that too, because they're supposed to be, in a public forum, typically, we, just so people know in the stream, that they are asked to identify themselves and their affiliation with the district, or where they're from, so, okay? Thank you.
Okay. This question is from Leo Perez. This is, this person has read the current frequently asked questions from the website, and realized that this has been addressed, but wondered if it could be reconsidered, if families started out in the in-person hybrid plan and became uncomfortable with it. Could they change their plan?
I would say, and I said this to the administrators the other day, that the 10-week commitment is a general commitment to enable the district to be able to accommodate a shift from someone who is assigned to remote to in-person. If it were a shift from in-person to remote, I think we would consider it if they contacted the principal, and we would take, take it under consideration. I think that's, would be an easier shift, once we have that full remote in place, to accommodate. So, and we've always been flexible and encouraged parents to talk with principals about individual situations. So, if you make a commitment to the remote program, full remote program, it may be harder to assimilate children back into the hybrid model before the 10-week period, but the opposite way, we might be able to work something out.
And would that, would that change the student's schedule perhaps?
There is a possibility that in doing that, teachers would change, and courses would change, it's a good point.
Okay, so that's, that's something a parent has to really keep in mind, if they're considering that, because it, you know, we're gonna try to build a structure for our students as they come in, and work through a process of getting them comfortable returning to school. And I think, have someone enter two or three weeks into the school would be challenging, but again, the reverse may be more doable, but it could have an impact on the child's schedule.
Yes.
If I can't tell who is sending this, you want me to read these questions?
Is it?
I don't have a name and address.
You don't? Okay. Is it appropriate question?
Yes.
Okay.
How will the special ed classes work for full remote students, for those with an IEP that have co-teaching services?
Okay, I know that Mrs. McGrath is working on this, I know that she also doesn't have everything arranged as of this point. Ms. McGrath, are you out there?
I am, Mr. Simons, can you hear me?
We need the volume to come up just a little bit, but we are, we are talking about how the scheduling of co-teaching would occur for students that are on full remote, and we know that it is challenged based on discussions we've just had this week.
Right, so right now, we're still waiting to see how many students request the full remote option by grade level, with their IEP in consideration. Mrs. Wager, does the question include a grade level?
No, it doesn't.
Okay, so for the K-5 world, it's a, it's a lot simpler, like you said, they'd be included in a remote class, and followed by their case manager they would have had in person, through some interaction during the day, and six through 12, we're working it out, right now, to see how the numbers fall.
Thank you, Ms. McGrath. Mr. Goodwin, Mike, if I call on anybody who's participating remotely, would a microphone, put a microphone up to the speaker, work? It's the old-fashioned way.
I think if the, the parent wants to contact Ms. McGrath with that question as well, or their office, that may be a better opportunity for them to get into the specifics of their child, and then address the question more, more accurately for them. It's, it's hard, given that we're still collecting some of the information.
Right.
Yeah, to address specific information, grade level, like Molly said, in those circumstances. So, I would encourage that person to reach out to the special ed director, or PBS director.
Thank you.
This same parent is asking, how will ensembles work for full remote students, orchestra, band, et cetera?
Okay. The music department, phys ed department, art department, and library media specialists were working this week on coordination of their plans to deliver their programs, and there are, there is information that is soon to be up on our website. Actually, Mr. McHugh was gonna report on that a little bit tonight, but we'll ask him to talk about it a little bit right now. There are lots of things occurring in terms of discussions of music, and how music would be delivered, and could be done safely. We think we've figured it out, and how that music would be delivered virtually versus in-person, versus on full remote. And there will be some differences and restrictions on what we normally would be able to do. Mr. McHugh?
Sure. So, our music department meant this week, just to really articulate exactly what that instruction would look like. So, there are some technology platforms that will help us quite a bit, one being Soundtrap, but specifically, I believe your question, the question was more towards the high school band and orchestra. So for fully remote instruction, music composition activities using Note Flight will be utilized, active listening assignments, audio and video recordings of student work, sight-reading factory assignments, participation in recorded Zoom and Google Meet lessons, and for live virtual instruction, they will use Zoom and Google Meets for small virtual ensembles and small lesson groups.
Mr. Simons, Nerissa Carbonaro would like to know if school books and materials will be provided for full remote students?
Yes, any materials that would be needed will be provided by the school, including textbooks where utilized, there'll be a lot of curriculum materials posted through the Google Classroom, and available electronically, but yes, in all cases, the materials that would be necessary for the students to learn will be provided through the remote, for remote.
And this has been addressed, but Lisa Langenbach has just signed on. She'd like to know how many students so far have chosen full remote, and when will we receive confirmation that we are on full remote list after we have chosen it on a survey?
The number of students K through 12 is about 500 right now, for full remote. I checked it at about 5:30 this evening, it's approximately 22% of those in, families that responded, but that's distributed across K through 12. What was the second part of the question? Linda?
I'm sorry, I have to go back to it.
Okay. When will be notified?
She'd like to be notified, when will she be notified, after she has completed the survey?
Mr. Simons?
If it's a full, if it's a request for a full remote program, those, parents of those students would be notified approximately September 2nd. The assignment of the AB groupings will be notified on the 28th of April, August. I said that, I did that in my, you know, I did that in my update, too, and I don't know why I'm saying April, April 28th must be somebody.
Is that the letter right?
Thank you. August, yeah. We're not going back to April.
And we have her, this parent's request, they're on both of our lists, so we've received her request.
Okay.
We have confirmed you're on the list.
That's all for the questions right now.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Linda, appreciate that, and I think, also appreciate the community participating in the board meeting and the committee forum, to ask the questions, again, refer to the FAQ if you do have a question before sending it out, and then, the, there is a second public forum, as part, for those of you who don't know the meetings, there is a second public forum, so if you have questions, we'll go back, again, later in the meeting, for the second public forum, to address any other questions that do come in. Okay? Great. Moving on, we have a very positive thing we want to do tonight, in recognizing our high school and our Red Mill Elementary School as recognition schools. I'll turn it over to Mr. Simons.
So very proud to be recognizing two of our schools this evening, who have received statewide recognition, and the principals of both of those schools are here. The New York State Education Department looks at student performance, and improvement in student performance in all of its schools, and it's a small number of schools that are classified in New York State as recognition schools. A recognition school is a school that is not only achieving high standards based on state assessments, Regents exams in the case of the high school, but is also making improvements overall on a stable basis. Part of that improvement measure is closing the gap between all of our students and some of our student groups, such as our economically disadvantaged students, and our students with disabilities. So to have two schools in one district recognized is remarkable. Additionally, Columbia High School has been recognized twice as a recognition school, and once as a reward school. and once as a reward school. So, these indicators go along with the most recently released state rankings that show that East Greenberg Central School District is one of the top performing districts among 87 districts in the capital region. I think we are ranked, is it eighth or ninth, Mr. McHugh? Eighth, okay. So, I'm pleased to have received from the State Education Department certificates of recognition for both Red Mill School and Columbia High School. And I'm going to ask the principals to come up in just a minute, but I'm going to put my mask on first. And from the State University of New York Education Department, in celebration of New York State schools that have high academic achievement, high growth and graduation rates, and have made progress during the 2018-19 school year, your school is considered a school of distinction as a recognition school, and this certificate acknowledges the achievement of Red Mill Elementary School as a New York State recognition school. And I would like to congratulate all of the staff at Red Mill and particularly our principal, Mrs. Scolacci, who will come up now and receive the certificate from the State Education Mr. Harkin is the principal at Columbia High School, and he's here with us this evening. And Columbia High School is one of the best high schools in the country and recognized in New York State as one of the best high schools in the state. And again, Columbia High School is recognized for high academic achievement, growth and graduation rate for its performance during the 2018-19 school year. This designation is a recognition of the excellence that Columbia High School provides to its students and a reflection of the quality of the instruction and the support provided by all of the faculty and staff at Columbia High School. Congratulations on behalf of Shannon Tahoe, former interim commissioner, and the State Education Department to Mr. Harkin for being named a recognition school once again, Columbia High School.[758.12][758.12][applause]
We're extremely proud of our, our students and staff for the accomplishments that they have, and in particular, at the high school and Red Mill. All of our elementary schools are middle school. We feel are some of the best schools in the, in the, in the state and in the region. So, we've, as a board, we support high academic achievement. It's one of our primary goals here at the district. And it's one of the things too that we considered as we developed our reopening plan. It's so important for us as a board to support our students' families and their academic achievement and goals, whether they be kindergarten through 12th grade and beyond. So, it's a, it's a recognition, and I'm really pleased to be part of this district that it's recognized by the State Education Department. And I'll put Mr. McHugh on the spot about our graduation rate last year. Mr. Harkin, nine, upper 90s?
Six.
Wow, so 97% graduation rate and looking at the data is because we think it's higher. Awesome. That is just terrific. Thank you, Mr. Harkin. So, with that, we will move to our board forum. Peter, can you bring up some of the folks in the, in virtual world, especially Mr. Dunn and Ms. Kamersky? Is that possible or we have some issue? Grid view is a little off, it sounds like, tonight, so... What's that? Jennifer Massey is it on as well? Okay, do we have a time when she came in for the board record at all, do you know?
It was 7:02. It was 7:02, Michael.
7:02.
7:02. Close enough. So, we'll start with the board members here that are present in the library. Well, I'll go around and start on my left with Mr. Mann. Mr. Mann is good. Kathleen, she's good. Ms. Taylor always has something to add. Thank you.
Just a, 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 a,[996.12]
Not anticipate any cash flow issues. And we want to be cautious about not overreacting to today's news. As we reopen our schools, we believe that we will be able to reopen. Under the current hybrid plan, we believe that we will be able to successfully sustain some of the expenses associated reopening. And we'll have to monitor what happens in the first semester. What happens financially for the district within the first semester could affect what we're able to do in the second semester. Some districts received the news today and due to their own individual circumstances, they may have to change their reopening plans. Right? We are, I am not recommending that we do that. The districts that are most seriously impacted by the state aid cuts are those that rely on state aid more than they do for local tax levies. So your rural school districts, your city districts like Troy, their budgets are built on counting on that state aid. Where our budgets, our budgets are built on counting on that state, but not as much as a percentage. We have districts in our area where 80 to 90% of the revenue to support their kids comes from state aid. We don't know what they're going to do. But at this point, due to the good long range planning that's been done in years past by our board and our administration, we are not going to take any type of significant and/or drastic action until we see what comes out of this. There is some sense that things could change in regarding federal support as we move closer to the election or after the election. We don't know that to be true. The state revenues are down. And the state told us this was coming. But at this point, we want to be cautious about not over responding to it. And Linda has taken some steps today to make sure that our revenue projections are adjusted to assume that those state aid payments would be reduced and is doing a cash flow analysis for you, which we will share. Now, did you want to comment on what's involved in that?
Sure. I am preparing a cash flow statement. And basically, I'm going to take all of the state aid payments that have statutory due dates and reduce those by 20% so that that will give us an idea of when we will run into issues and so that we can properly address them. But basically, the cash flow statement will show cash estimated to come in by month. And I will be updating it monthly so that the projected amounts will become actual and it will carry forward. So we'll have cash, the revenues coming in, and the expenditures going out. Our main expenditures being payroll and debt service payments. Those types of items are scheduled. And the main revenue coming in is our state aid and our taxes. So both of those items, we'll be watching closely.
Just a quick question, Linda. What are some of the biggest areas around state aid? I'm assuming like transportation, building aid, textbook aid?
The main area, as a matter of fact, I spoke to state aid planners today and I was reading up on the items that they're looking to cut. Our main aid categories that we're watching are our general foundation aid.
Foundation aid, okay.
And our excess cost aid payments and possibly building aid.
Okay.
Now, the excess cost aid payment that we had recorded as of June 30th, we received the ACH payment on that and that was already cut 20%. So it was $176,000 less than we expected.
The excess cost aid and the transportation aid. Excess cost aid is for students who, some students who receive special education, for which the services that we provide are expensive and eligible for reimbursement. Special education students often receive smaller classes, supportive teaching assistance, related services. The difficulty with this particular aid category is we've already provided that service last year under a rule that would reimburse us at a certain amount for that service. So the expense has already been incurred, but the revenue isn't flowing based on what we projected. Transportation aid is reimbursed across the state for districts' operation of their buses. There is some effect of the March through June closure on our overall transportation aid, but there's also been a cut projected. So those are big categories of aid. Building aid, when we go out to the voters, we're required to share with the voters the projected share of the building project that the state would pay. Historically, building aid has not been reduced. When it's been discussed to be reduced, it has been preserved. The building aid payment schedule, however, could be adjusted to give us less and spread it out over time. So we're really not sure whether these reductions in payments would be made up at some point or whether they represent a overall reduction of 20% in aid or a slowing of the payments. But it's, we have to, we have to be cautious and plan that it is a 20% cut.
Well, you know, our experience with the gap elimination has been the state doesn't really make up their payments very well. So let's hope, keep our fingers crossed. But yeah, I appreciate seeing that information when you're ready, Linda, and we can share that with the board and the community about the impact. Thanks for the update, Mr. Simons. Any questions on that, board members? We'll now move to discussion items. I don't have anything. Board members, anything that was not scheduled? No? Okay. Then if nothing there, we will go to committee reports and we'll start with Marissa.
Each year, the school districts in the state of New York need to file with the State Education Department the School Safety and Educational Climate Summary Data Form. The SSEC is part of SED's implementation of DASAA and VADA regarding violent or disruptive incidents and harassment and bullying. During the 2019-2020 school year, we had a total of 22 incidents reported across all school districts. This is down from the 48 incidents that were reported in the 2018-2019 school year. Reasonably, we can conclude that the decreased amount of incidents was largely due to the shortened in-person school year with remote learning commencing in March. Just to go over a breakdown, there's several categories that the SSEC form collects on, one being assault, physical injury. This year, there were a total of four incidents in that category. One was at DPS. Three were at Columbia High School. We had one incident of a weapons possession. It was at DPS and it involved a knife. We had a total of eight incidents of discrimination, harassment, and bullying excluding cyberbullying. Three of these incidents were at Goff and five were at Columbia High School. And then we had two counts of cyberbullying and those were at Columbia High School. One incident of a false alarm at Columbia and then the use possession or sale of drugs. We had six incidents at Columbia High School. There were no use possession or sale of alcohol this year. So again, a total of 22 counts of incidents and this is down from the 48 incidents from the previous school year.
Thank you, Marissa. Any questions for Marissa? All right. Seeing none, I'll move on to, thank you, Marissa. Linda, anything for you?
I have nothing at this time.
Okay. Mr. McHugh?
Just a brief update on the work that has taken place over the last week or so regarding the East Green Bush Central School District Remote and Virtual Plan. We had a total of 32 teachers that worked to really articulate what the expectations were. Just to highlight a few of those points, for K-5, teachers defined what the remote expectations were in regards to the duration of time that students should be working on remote days. For the grades kindergarten through second grade, 45 to 60 minutes of independent asynchronous learning. Asynchronous means that it's flexible in time when students engage in that work. Once you get into grades three through five, that expectation was 60 to 90 minutes of independent work. For live virtual instruction, something that our teachers recognized right away was that we serve a very, we serve a population that has diverse diversity in their needs in regards to their ability to support their child at home and we are cognizant of developmental appropriateness. So in regards to attending live instruction, our teachers made sure that part of that plan is that some of those lessons will be recorded so that families and students can access that assigned work. So in other words, the framework that we created, if it does not work for a parent and the child cannot log on at that time, say it's 9 to 11 o'clock, that those lessons would be accessible for parents at a later time. Just to give you an example, for kindergarten through second grade, a sample framework for virtual instruction would be that there would be a morning core content instruction, approximately 120 minutes. There would be approximately 60 minutes allowed for that lunch and recess. There will be office hours for families to reach out to their child's teacher and I'll define that. And then there's an afternoon core content instruction, which is 70 minutes in duration. And then again, some office hours in the afternoon. Core content instruction, when we talk about that, that's live instruction, including whole and small group independent learning. So when we said there's 120 minutes in the morning, that 120 minutes could be utilized for whole group, it could be utilized for small group, and it could be utilized for some independent learning. It's also possible that a child will also have their special schedule during that time. So they may have art, music, library, or physical education during that time. And that instruction will also be provided during live virtual. Office hours, we really define that as that the classroom teacher is available to offer additional support and answer questions about assignments or expectations. So if a parent has a question, our teachers each will have a set 30-minute block where they will have office hours. The 3-5, similar, we left a little block for our morning routine just so that we tried to make that academic day as normal as possible. The morning routine would allow students to check into their Google Classroom, complete readiness tasks. And then again, a core content instructional block in the AM as well as one in the afternoon. And then again, office hours for parents to be able to connect with their child's teacher. For those students that are choosing the full remote option, that core content instruction would be a blend of synchronous and asynchronous. Synchronous meaning that it's live, it's more rigid in its design, but it is interactive. So students and teacher could interact and answer and ask questions with also a blend of asynchronous opportunities where teachers could, or where students could access additional resources and lessons and projects. Few other things in regards to grades six through eight, we are trying to determine what that bell schedule will be for the duration of the periods in the schedule. But in general, teachers are going to follow their instructional schedules, students will follow their academic schedules, attendance will be taken period by period. For physical education, we're going to maximize the opportunity to be outside this early fall. So whenever it is possible, classes will be outside. For our grades six through 12, we are not going to have students change. We do not want that time in the locker room in a confined space. So students are going to immediately go outside with their physical education and engage in a variety of activities that are developmentally appropriate. We'll list those samples. I will get this on our website so people can see it in greater detail. In regards to general music, our K-5 folks are going to use a new platform called Music Play. It's an online program, both in full remote as well as live virtual instruction. Once we get up and do fifth grade band and orchestra, teacher-guided instruction using Essential Elements, that's an online program. And there will be an opportunity for students to engage in small virtual ensembles and lesson groups on those virtual instruction. That's a benefit of having that live virtual day because those are things that we may not be able to facilitate in person time. So that live virtual day lends itself to those types of activities. We talked about our upper grades in music. Just a couple of other things in regards to art, it's still going to remain skill-based instruction, the New York State Standards, art-based instruction, teacher and/or student-led. We're going to continue to design those lessons so that there's hands-on experience. Our teachers were very thoughtful and mindful in regards to distribution of materials and creating actual art kits for students. So we're minimizing the times and the instances, the likelihood that students have to share resources. So we're trying to make sure that we can prepare those art kits for students so they have their own materials that would be needed for their classes. One other highlight that I just want to mention that really shows the depth of thought put into this was in library. So the K-5 in-person and virtual, they're going to focus on standards-based instruction, priority concepts of library introduction, folate introduction. That's the new platform that the board approved over a year ago. And database use and inquiry, literature appreciation, digital citizenship. On remote days, there'll be some choice boards, librarians will post learning activities that students could select from. But what I do want to highlight is they really articulated what the circulation plan would be. So the expectation for students to use hand sanitizer before and after browsing, maintaining social distancing from others, returning books that have been handled but not checked out to a designated cart. So those materials won't go right back on the shelf. Borrowing books, students will have the ability to still browse and borrow during in-person time. Students and teachers will be instructed on how to browse and request books through folate desti-
They mean they're closed.
They don't have to go right to the shelves, but they'll be able to use that platform. And then when-
You're on your lunch.
Returned, library books, the book return bins are going to be set up.
You're on your lunch.
Week, the return bins-
You're on your lunch.
-will be a daily quarantine bin. And those books will be stored for one week, sanitized, and then re-shelved for circulation after that one-week period. So folks covered all of their bases with that. Any questions?
Thank you. I want to thank the staff that came in to work on this. And you said this will be posted, Jim, for our-
Yes, we will get it posted up as soon as possible.
Great. I just want, can you give a sense too about the engagement of our teachers? You said some real great things about engagement and the activity and their, the positive energy that you felt with that group.
It's a great experience.
Great experience, as Jim said, yeah. So everyone's looking forward to coming back. I think putting this plan in place, the more details we can share with our community and for our parents, hopefully gives them a comfort level about what we're trying to do to help them and support them. So thank you for your work. Any other questions for Jim? All right. Moving to the next, Mr. Simons, do you have any?
The only thing I would say is we distributed to the board members before the meeting the updated committee report that we provide you that has the list of the committees. And I know that Stephanie sent your assignments earlier. The first page, which, first or second page, which has the objectives in it, those will be reviewed in the first meetings that we have. We may update those for the year. So you might get a supplement handout to plug into your binder because we haven't had those meetings yet. So we typically, at the beginning of the year, our first meetings, we look at what we want to accomplish for the year, update the objectives, and we'll send them out to you.
Do we have hard copies for our board members who are virtual to the mail-in?
We will certainly do that, yes.
And so Michelle-
Board members not in attendance, we'll make sure you get it tomorrow.
Okay. We'll get those, this little folder here. Okay. Just a quick question. Last time, we talked about the tablets for K-1. Updates at all on the order? K-1 tablets?
Thank you, Mr. Pino. We have no update on their delivery as of yet.
But you ordered them.
They were ordered.
They were ordered, okay. Just thought I'd ask since we're here. All right. Thanks, Mr. Simons. Now, moving to our next topic is the draft minutes for July 29th. Any revisions or corrections to the minutes? I have, everyone was present for those, July 29th? No? Good, good. If not, I need a motion to approve those minutes. Joanne, second. Michelle, all those in favor? Approved. The next set of minutes we have is from August 12th. I have them. Michelle, you were not here for that meeting, right? Okay, so you'll abstain. Any revisions or corrections to those minutes? Seeing none, I need a motion to approve that. Kathleen, second. Mark, all those in favor? All those abstaining? Michelle? Very good, that's approved. Moving to the regular business, we have, as Mr. Simons said earlier, we have the approval of the East Green Bush Central School District reopening plan. I'm going to, I'm going to read the resolution here because I think it's important that everyone understand kind of what we're trying to do here. Upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby approves the East Green Bush Central School reopening plan and directs the superintendent to implement the plan for the fall of 2020 in accordance with all New York State guidelines and regulations. It is understood that such school reopening plans are subject to adjustments in response to evolving circumstances within the district, the region, and the state. Thus, the superintendent is directed to ensure that the board is kept informed regarding the implementation of the plans and any potential changes that may be necessary in the interest of students, staff, and community health and safety. I felt it was very important to read that because it does reiterate the fact that adjustments may have to be made, even though the board is accepting the plan and approving that we move forward with this plan. Again, circumstances and adjustments may need to be made to address the needs. Okay. Any, I think we've been through this quite a bit. Is there any final comments you'd like to make, Mr. Simons, before we move forward with the motion?
I don't have any further information.
Any comments, board members, as we go through? If not, I need a motion to approve this reopening plan? Mark, I need a second. John, all those in favor? Okay, the reopening plan is approved.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Moving to the next item, approval of programs for residential children with disabilities. Any questions? Seeing none, I need a motion to approve that. Kathleen, second. Jennifer, all those in favor? That's approved. Next, we have amended memorandum of agreement with East Green Bush Teachers Association. Mr. Simons, you want to comment on that?
Yes, I am pleased that I am able to recommend to the board the memorandum of agreement related to successor agreement for the East Green Bush Teachers Association. The current agreement expired in June of 2019. While we did have an extended negotiation period, I believe that this agreement is a fair agreement for both the district and the members of the East Green Bush Teachers Association. The district team represented by our central administration and our attorney as needed, and the East Green Bush negotiating team, we really worked hard on this during a protracted period of negotiations. There were thoughtful exchanges, a give and take at various points. The Teachers Association leadership, Drew Romanowski, Chris Ciccone, and the entire team, I want to congratulate them for all of their work on it. I think the agreement in total reflects the quality of the education that we want to continue to provide students in East Green Bush and we want to continue to provide affordability to our taxpayers. So some of the provisions in the agreement that are new are welcomed and appreciated by the district, particularly as the Teachers Association has indicated agreement over time of the life of the contract to help the district manage its increasing health insurance costs. Additionally, there were some items where we felt the teachers had some needs and we were able to address those needs within the contract. Additionally, there are some options that provide some flexibility as we schedule staffing through the, through the school year. There are some options that provide some incentives for our teachers that may want to go back and seek a certification area, a second certification area, which will enhance our ability to provide education in areas that are short, shortage of teachers, such as in the areas of technology and foreign language and other, family consumer science and other areas. So this agreement, I'm 100% confident is in the best interests of everybody. I appreciate the work that has been done by both negotiating teams and I recommend that you support it.
Great, thank you. All right. I need a motion to approve the MOA with the Teachers Association. Michelle, second. Kathleen, all those in favor? Approved. Thank you, everybody. I want to congratulate the teams that worked on that and appreciate all the work that was done to, to get the agreement in place. So, very good.
I thought it was important to emphasize that this is, this has been an ongoing negotiation for, since March of 2019. So this has been, this has been worked on for a significant period of time. It's not something that's just coming up now. It's just coming onto the board agenda now, but it is not, it is not something in response to any current events. It's something that's been ongoing for about the last year and a half.
Correct. Yeah, usually we, for, for members of the public who are listening, you know, the process does typically start much before the end of a, conclusion of a contract or agreement. And, you know, working together through a lot of difficult circumstances, even with the pandemic, we were able to reach an agreement and put something in place for the beginning of the school year.
Thank you, Mr. Pino.
Reports and presentations of superintendent schools?
Nothing further.
Nothing further, okay. Table motions, I have none at this time. Old business, board members, anything? No? I do have one item. I just want to say that the, I think with Stephanie's help and Jean's help, we got the interview scheduled for Monday and Tuesday evening. We're all set, everyone's confirmed. I did send all of the board members draft questions. If you have any comments or revisions there, let's work on that. Kathleen did suggest a rubric perhaps to, because there is eight people. We can maybe look at that. Maybe Marissa can help us out with that. Give us some suggestions. But we're all set for Monday and Tuesday. So I want to thank everyone's flexibility and able to work to get that happening for, for next week. And hopefully, at the conclusion of that process, we can have someone recommended for the appointment to the rein or the term for Ms. Curran's resignation. I do not have anything else on old business. Going to the consent agenda, are there any questions? We have items A through J. Any questions or comments regarding the consent agenda? Jennifer, John, and Michelle, you good? Any questions? Okay, thumbs up. Anyone, board members?
I do, there was an item that I wanted to, if you could highlight, Mr. Simons, about the different towns and the tax rates.
The district is asking the board to approve the tax rates for the 2020-21 school year. The proposed budget, which was passed by the community, included a 1.5% tax levy increase. The tax levy increase represents the total amount of money we need to collect this year to sustain the budget through the tax levy. However, the tax rates vary in different ways. They vary by municipality. And we have tables available if anybody would like to look at that within this attached document. The tax rates are also impacted by the fact that East Green Bush has a residential tax rate and a commercial tax rate as well as the equalization rates. In general, the rates across the municipalities within the district are less disparate than they have been in prior, in the prior year and more balanced. So while some of the, some of the rates go down, some go up, in general, they don't go up and down- go up and down as much as they have year to year in the past, and part of that is because of the stabilization of the equalization rates. Equalization rates are a factor that is used to determine the, the difference between the assessed value of a home and the market, the full value of a home, to average it out across New York State, because different municipalities assess properties differently. So, the change, as it spreads across our five municipalities, is less, less of a spike or less of a decline than it has been in the past. And do you have anything to add about that? That's my general terminology. Sorry, I didn't know you were prepared to do that. If you want to point out some of the, if you want to point out some of the increases and decreases by municipality, that would be helpful.
Thank you.
As Mr. Simons indicated, we have in this district a dual tax rate system. So, we have a homestead rate and a non-homestead rate. That distinction is determined by the state of New York, but it's generally residential versus commercial. The other factors that go into it, as Mr. Simon said, is the, are the equalization rates, the assessed values, the full values of properties. And on page five of the memo that I've attached, letter E, shows the tax rates, the homestead tax rates by town in the current year versus last year. And you can see that there's not much of a change, some have gone up, some have gone down a little bit, but basically, there is a, a range of going down by two, 1% up to increasing by 2%. And as I said, that, a lot, a lot of that has to do with assessed values. And there's a small amount of omitted taxes this year, and that is, that, those omitted taxes are taxes that, a tax advantage that a property, property owner has had in the past that they weren't entitled to, and so that property owner will pay that portion. So, that's deducted from the amount that we have to raise from the rest of the community. So, in this memo, there are four resolutions that we need to review.
Yep.
Shall I start?
Yep.
Okay. So, the first resolution is the adoption of the dual tax rate system. And in there, you can see that approximately 68% of the properties in our district are considered homestead, and 32% are considered non-homestead. So, the dual tax rate system allows for an advantage to homestead taxpayers. So, first, we need a resolution, we need to adopt the resolution to adopt the dual tax rate system. The second resolution is the tax warrant. As I said, in the, in the budget packet, our tax levy this year is $58,374,546, and the amount we need to raise, adjusted by the omitted taxes, is $58,372,685.07. The next warrant, or resolution, I'm sorry, number three, regards, the tax law allows a tax levying body to authorize a designated individual to make adjustments or corrections to the tax roll, as long as they don't exceed $2,500. And the reason for this is just to expedite the, the process. And in this case, this resolution is asking that I, as the Director of Business and Finance, am authorized to, to direct, to perform the duties as set forth in the Section 554 of the New York State Real Property Tax Law, allowing for these small changes. And then the last resolution, number four, is the tax, is the settlement of tax tertiary cases. This is also asking the board that I am authorized to settle cases regarding tax tertiarys that do not amount, that amount to less than $30,000. Are there any questions on those?
Thank you, Linda.
Good.
Just a couple of comments from myself on the consent agenda, I just want to, I see that, welcome, I see there's several new teachers, teaching staff, and others that are joining us, and normally, we get a chance to see them in the boardroom and welcome them to the district. Are we having a virtual orientation this year, Arissa, or in person?
We are, we're gonna do a virtual orientation on Monday, August 24th. We're gonna do the sexual harassment training. Mr. McHugh is gonna be going over our district's curriculum initiatives. Ms. McGrath is going to be giving an overview of special education. We have Capital EAP doing a presentation as well to go over their services and how they can be of help. And then Mr. Tucker is doing our safety training for two hours. And then at the end of the day, our new staff members will be able to meet with their associated unions for the last hour of the agenda. So, even though it'll be remote, it'll still be a nice time to, you know, meet everyone over Zoom and a Google Meet, and we welcome everyone for the beginning of the school year.
Now, have, have these new staff, anyone get into the, see the buildings at all, and classrooms that they're gonna be assigned to at all, yet? Have they been in, into their buildings at all, or anything like that?
They actually have not. We have been conducting our first round interviews just due to the large number of initial candidates remotely, and then for the final round of interviews with central office, they've been in person. So, everyone's seen what the central office has looked like, but not yet into the buildings.
Okay, okay. And I want to welcome the staff aboard again, and I know that you're coming into the district at a challenging time, but it's a great district, and we want to thank you for choosing the district to begin your teaching career, those who are new, and those who chose to leave a district and come to us because we're a wonderful district, we know that, right? So, thank you again. And the last thing, I just want to thank on our, where is it? Gifts and authorization, gifts and donations, just interesting and thankful, 750 space shields from Scott's Miracle Grow Company, I thought that was a wonderful addition to our PPE needs. Quite a nice donation. Never knew they did that kind of thing, but it's, it's, of course, welcome, any donations of PPE in this time are welcome, so. Any other comments or questions on the consent agenda? No? If not, I need-
Mr. Pino, can I make a comment about the safety, the safety plan?
Oh, yes, okay, sure.
Yeah. The board preliminary approved the safety plan-
That's right.
About a month ago, and we had a public comment period. We did not hear any public comments regarding the safety plan. We were able to get the agreement with the, that was approved by the town of East Green Bush for extension of the school resource officer arrangement. I'll be meeting with the chief to discuss the selection of the resource officer. As you know, the former resource officer, Marie, has left and joined, rejoined her old police force. So, we will need a new resource officer, and we're continuing the arrangement with the Rensselaer County Sheriff's Department for the, for Jeff Russo to be the resource officer at the middle school. I did want to say that with Melissa presenting the, the, what used to be called the VADA Report, the school safety index and climate index, our resource officers play a critical role in intervening and helping kids who may be in need of extra support or direction, so that it's a prevention of some of the things that may show up in that type of report. They work in tandem with the counselors, the administrators, the teachers, and the families to help kids be successful. And I've seen many kids saved by a school resource officer, and, and so, when I have heard some of the things that I've been said in the popular media lately about resource officers and taking resource officers out of our schools, I couldn't disagree more, because our resource officers are not there as agents of discipline, they're, they're there as mentors and educators and resources to keep the kids safe. So, we're fortunate that our board supports the SRO program, and I just want to make sure that members of our community understand that our resource officers are educators, are counselors, and they're law enforcement officers, but they're not, they're not there for any other reason but to help the kids and to keep everybody safe.
Just a quick question about that, I mean, in the, during the pandemic, we didn't have the, if a school was not in session, during our, our current schedule with the virtual remote day, would those officers be reassigned, or how is that gonna work?
We haven't figured that out.
Still in process?
At this time, we were able, we were, we did get some reprieve in the financial arrangement, as I understand it, from the county, and I'm not sure about East Green Bush as of this point, but there were some adjustments made to the, to the, the payments based on the fact that they went back on the road in the spring.
And maybe it's a good opportunity for them to take additional training, things like that, especially if a new person's coming onboard who's for resource.
And did you have any details on that?
They credited us the, the fourth quarter.
Very good.
So, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Simons. Any other comments or questions, consent agenda? If not, I need a motion to approve consent agendas, items A through J. Need a motion there. Kathleen, second. Joanne, all those in favor? Approved, thank you very much. New business, I just had two items I want to bring the board's attention. NISBA is doing a virtual convention. I don't know, I mean, we've always been closed out of sessions in the past, so I don't know if we've seen the program or not, or if anyone's gonna attend. We should sign up through, Linda, if we're interested in the virtual convention?
Is that one of the orientation activities that Larry went over with you? I don't know whether she knew of that.
But it always sounded more interesting in person, but if someone is interested, they can just email me and I will sign you up.
Yeah, I would be, and there is the, the pre-law seminar is usually pretty good. I think, Mark, have you attended that one? I think he has. I mean, it'd be interesting to, yeah, yeah. A lot of us have been, a lot of us have been doing virtual trainings and seminars and webinars and that kind of stuff too, so if it's, you know, well-done and informative and we get kind of the, the right topics, it may be worth exploring, so. See, we don't see everything I had. No, I guess that was it. Okay, anyone else seeing new business to bring the board? Now, moving to our second public forum. Linda, if you'd be so kind to check the email if there's anything additional to comment?
Yes. Kim Dunn is a parent of an incoming kindergartner, and she would like to know when and where will the supply list be out for parents to purchase for the school supplies for the year?
We're hoping to have the supply list released on the same day that we release the AB grouping assignments, and that would be the 28th of August, which that would be released.
So, a lot of things happening at the end of the month. So, August 28th, so, anything else?
Amy Scry is the parent of an incoming kindergarten student, and would like to know those students that are on full remote, going, are they going to be interacting with other students via Zoom or Google Meets, or with just their teacher? In addition, approximately how many kindergarten students are full remote out of the approximate 500?
Okay. The first part of the question, will the children in kindergarten on full remote be interacting with other children assigned to full remote? Yes. Okay. They will be interacting with their teacher as well, and it will follow a similar structure that the virtual Wednesdays followed for the hybrid that Mr. McHugh spoke about. If you give me just a second, I could probably pull up the number of kindergartners that have signed up for full remote at this time. Give me just a minute.
Yeah, and if, and if the parent is listening, I think if you can pull up the attachment that Jim just presented, you can see that framework for the full remote K2, and then see the interactive piece that, yeah.
That's correct. A morning court content block, and then some office hours, and then an afternoon court content block, so it'll be posted.
Be posted, okay.
It mirrors our virtual Wednesday.
Great.
And that report is under attachment 7C, community reports.
So, we have a breakdown, is there any research for, Mr. Simons?
Yes, currently, the number of kindergartners requesting full remote stands at 35 children. So, that would be two classes, as of this point.
Thank you. Tiana Petinger is the parent of an elementary and middle school students, and she asked, "The full-time remote plan newly added to the website indicates that students must use a school-issued device or Chromebook for the remote learning activities. Does this mean that students are not able to use personal laptop computers to do their full-time remote learning?" And then there's a second part to the question, but-
Okay, we've, the board approved the purchase of devices for kindergarten through first grade last board meeting. In the event that those devices aren't in, they would certainly be permitted to use their own devices, and I would have to defer to Mr. Goodwin as to the, I think there's a particular reason why our devices would facilitate the remote learning and provide some assurances of security, but I don't know the details. Mr. Goodwin, can you speak nice and loud?
Yes, Mr. Simons, very briefly, we normally would prefer students to use a district-issued device because there are certain policies that are pushed out from our Google domain onto those devices that help keep children safe and to make sure that the devices are working well.
Thank you. But in the event that they don't arrive distributed, they certainly would use their own device until such time as we provide the device.
Right, and now, the district went to a one-to-one Chromebook, you know, situation last couple of years, and I think we, we pushed those down into the kindergarten level as those devices come in. Students are not prohibited explicitly to, from using personal devices. I can speak from personal experience in my home that the cell phone, smartphone is quite a, you know, well-used device by some of the, of the students to do their work on. It's pretty amazing to see someone do a whole paper on a phone, but I think we can reassure our parents that the technology will be available, access will be available. Again, it's about equity in technology, equity in access, equity in opportunity for all our students, as we've kind of reiterated through our plan, so, great question.
The second part of that que, that question is, is it expected that full-time remote students in middle school will be able to be in accelerated science or math if they were accepted into those classes?
We are trying to meet that expectation, and we're working on it, yes. And we're working on ways to deliver that. So, we are going to do our best on that, and if there were any change, we would inform the children who qualified for, the parents who qualified for accelerated classes.
That's all I have.
Great, good. Okay, well, thank you for the comments and the, the questions, again, refer to the FAQ. Will we continue to build that based on the committee forum from last night and the questions that we received this evening? Next, we'll move to the board forum. I'll go to my colleagues out in the virtual world. Jennifer, anything? You're good, thumbs up. Michelle? You're good. Mr. Dunn?
Are you ready?
I know you, we always save you for the second forum, so.
No, this, I'll be brief, but I just wanted to thank everybody. I know we're full of accolades and, and praises, but in these difficult times, I really wanted to thank the administrative team of Mr. Simons and crew for continuing to allow the board to govern the district, because governance is the main focus of the district in creating policy and procedures and, and the budget. And without the proper information that were provided, we can't make the decisions that we make to move this district forward. And I really want to thank my fellow board members for the time and energy of listening to the constituency, listening to all of the people involved in this, and really trying to formulate a plan that aligns with our values, our goals and objectives, and maintaining a safe, equitable education for all students, and also keeping in mind the role of taxpayer responsibility with funding in these challenging times. So, I just wanted to acknowledge that, and without confidence in the administrative team, it would make our job very difficult. We do hear from people out there. I read the frequently asked questions, and it was really a balance to try to address the concerns that our community has, but recognizing that, as we made the decision to come up with the hybrid plan, I really support this, and here, the reason why is we're driving at 50, 60 miles an hour in a fog right now, and I believe that the hybrid plan, while not perfect- And I believe that the hybrid plan, while not perfect, and does have some bumps and bruises, but it is a plan that will enable us to adjust to the bumps and bruises as we move forward in whatever direction we're going to be. This isn't going to be forever, folks. We're a school community. We're going to, we're going to band together, whether it be cleaning the desks and doing what we have to do to make everybody happy and safe. And most importantly, this is for these kids. We've all lost a piece of our lives in this, in this time. But think of the children. Each stakeholder group has a valid concern and an argument to support their cause. But we, in coming together the way we have, have at least given them some stability for the opening weeks of school, and I think that is really important. We have to remind ourselves of that. And without the great employees of the district, we couldn't achieve that. So I just wanted to personally thank you and also my fellow board members for the time and dedication to make this a safe opening day. And that ends my diatribe for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Always appreciated. So we'll start on my right. Joe, anything? You're good. Kathleen, good. Mark, comments? All set. Okay. Just want to reiterate what Mr. Dunn said. Excellent comments. The, this process continues to evolve. I firmly believe that coming back to school in some form or fashion like we proposed is in the best interest of our community, our kids, our staff, to kind of come back to something that resembles what we record, probably the new normal. And again, it will evolve. It could change, could shift, but we'll be prepared. And that's the benefit of planning. It's preparation. And then from there, we'll adjust, because we've been through the exercise. We've talked about it a lot, the what-ifs, and then how we can best present the best educational opportunities for our students and to meet the needs of our families. So, again, appreciate all the work that's been done. And then with that, we do have need for a brief executive session to discuss collective negotiations related to the reopening. And with that, we'll need 10 minutes. Mr. Goodwin will send a link to the board members. So thank you for attendance. I appreciate the parent input. Questions, keep them coming. There's a dedicated email, as Mr. Simons said, regarding reopening. Review the FAQs and hopefully we can answer those questions. So, thank you very much. And again, recognizing, I thank Mr. Harkin and Ms. Quilati for coming in tonight to receive the recognition awards. We appreciate you coming in tonight and seeing you. Thank you. Take care, everyone. Good night.